NIAC accreditation, and so I'm very happy to acknowledge that our NIAC accreditation has been maintained for the Ethel E. Hammond School for the Kindergarten Program. So that is definitely good news. All that hard work paid off. Thank you Nancy. And the Wareham High School student Elizabeth Malloy's art work has been accepted into the 2012 Art Allstate at the Worcester Art Museum. And there will be a program held there on June 1st and 2nd where the artwork will be displayed and a competition. So that's also very good news for talented artists from our school system.
Anybody else with good news for the committee?
Breaking news from ESPN analyst Scott Palladino that another former Wareham athlete has made it to the NFL. Shay Allen, one of the very good players for Wareham, signed with the Green Bay Packers as I was just notified. And of course, everyone knows about Stephen Cooper. So if you want to make it big, move to Wareham, come play sports in Wareham. We have an excellent basketball program, football, and congratulations to Shay. I just feel bad when he has to face my New York Giants.
Just remember, it also requires rigorous academic eligibility.
Oh.
Anybody else with some good news? Jessica?
We just started AP testing today.
That's good news.
Well, the end of the year is coming. And John is performing the Pirates of Pen Dance live. And they're starting the performances tomorrow, Thursday, May 10th, and they'll be continuing on to this Saturday. The doors open at 6:30 and the performance starts at 7:00. So I hope you can join them. MCAS is also coming up. And from what most seniors are waiting for, May 18th, our last day. That's good news for us again.
Got it. Any other good news? All right, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. I'll take the minutes of April 4th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes for the 4th as submitted.
Do I have a second? Second? Any discussion?
No discussion.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it was this one or the other one where it said the meeting was opened by the superintendent?
Yes. That's April 4th, and the reason is because that's our reorganization.
Got it. That's it.
Good question here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0. Next, we'll move to the meeting of April 25th.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 25th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0. Thank you. We will now move to the iPad presentation by teachers and students, and we are thrilled to have both parties here. Who's leading this? Terry?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Please grant me one minute to get my iPad connected.
No comments from the member of the school committee?
I intend to take about two minutes to tell you basically things that I've heard from the teachers this past year that were involved in the pilot. When you hear from the teachers and the students that are here, you'll know why I didn't even want to take two minutes of their time. We had three goals when we began this pilot. One was to enhance instruction. The second one was to expand student learning, and the third was to increase opportunities for all students regardless of learning style and/or ability. So I asked the teachers, and I've been listening to the teachers throughout the year, for evidence of how instruction has been enhanced. And I heard things like formative assessment, it's on the fly, it's ready quickly, quick feedback for the teachers and the students, access to online resources to bring multimedia into the classroom, and immediacy of access for information. One teacher, Ms. LaSorza, shared with us that it came up in a question about the volume of a cone, which is not normally a sixth grade topic, that's my understanding. The students were able to grab their iPads, they found three different resources about the volume of the cone, and were able to debate which online resource gave the best explanation as their development of the volume, understanding the volume of the cone developed. For expanding student learning, the iPads were able to motivate reluctant readers, they were able to show their understanding based upon inquiry, active engagement where all students can progress at their own rate or with their individual needs. The iPads have been able to assist with more in-depth literary study as students find additional resources that complement the themes in the text they're studying. And one specific example was students were able to create, edit, design a movie, write a script, write scenes, develop characters, record, edit, and share those movies with the rest of the class, all done on the iPad, all very easily. And the third goal was to increase opportunities for learning. I mean, notice the print gets smaller on this slide, and by no means did I include everything that I heard, but differentiate instruction based upon their interests. They allowed for individual practice of skills in math, personalized learning to the individual. Students could decide which medium to use for learning, and that the iPad was one of the tools that worked for them. There are a variety of games and apps that appeal to all levels and that are leveled for where students need their practice. And immediate access for communication with tools like word prediction, audiobooks, voiceover of any digital text, visual prompts, speech, text-to-speech, which provide increased learning success and independence for all students. And a specific example that was given by a fourth grade teacher was that there were additional opportunities to use Study Island online software this year with having the iPads in class and not having to wait till it was their turn to go to the computer lab, which gave all of the students more practice and the teacher more data to direct future lessons in math class. And I think that at this point, I'll go out on a limb and say that the iPads allowed for increased engagement and achievement, and something that we don't like to talk about, tech proficiency. You know, we like to think of the iPads as just a tool, not necessarily technology, but they have allowed for increased engagement, increased achievement, and increased tech proficiency in the students that have used them this year as well as the teachers. So that's what I have to talk to you about today. There's a more in-depth recommendation coming from the iPad Pilot Teachers that will be given to Dr. Vinovich tomorrow, and we hope to share more information with you at that time. And without holding things up further, I would like to introduce Ms. Henigan, who is here with her fourth grade students.
Thank you. I actually did prepare something, but I don't want to be redundant, first of all. And second of all, tomorrow is MCAS for my students, and I would like them to present to you and get a good night's sleep. But I will just share a couple of things with you that you may not know. I do have a webpage via the Wareham Public School webpage. If you just navigate to mine at fourth grade and Robin Henigan, I do have a webpage where this is the first year I've been able to actually post student work because I actually have student work from every member of my class, and that's because the iPad was in their hands every day. As in the past, I would have to sign up for the computer lab. So that's one way. It's really changed my role as a teacher, the lessons that I've prepared in the past that frustrated me and students because we only had that one 40-minute block once a week. Now I could see that come to fruition, and I have actual performance assessment pieces. But really, rather than say anything else, I would invite you to come to my classroom. I invite you to check out their work on the webpage and projects that I've posted. I'd really like to introduce my students, and these are opinion pieces that they wrote based on evidence. That was their assignment. Not every student chose to write about iPads, they chose other opinion pieces, but this group felt it was really important, and I would just like to introduce them one by one. First, Sorab Nyman.
I believe that iPads help students learn.
Robert, could you do me a favor and make sure you're close enough to the mic so the people at home can hear you?
That's just for the TV.
No, it's just for the TV.
They can hear.
But nice and close, Robert.
He's good.
I believe that iPads help students learn. First, on Show Me, our teacher gives us math problems and we use our fingers to write or draw the answer. Second, we also use our everyday math game applications to practice different math concepts. Third, in Keynote, we create presentations about different topics like our national park project. We research about our topics using multiple sources and transfer all of our photographs to Keynote. When writing our interesting facts about our topics in Keynote, we arrange each sentence in our own words. We also add in animation effects that give the presentation a little twist. We learn a lot of information using our Keynote application. Fourth, on the internet, we travel to all different kinds of websites like Sumdog, a math game that helps you with learning different math operations, Everyday Mathematics Student Reference Book, our school website, the Scholastic News website, our Houghton Mufflin reading books, our science books, and so many more learning websites. The internet might save money for a school because all of our learning tools at school are pretty much all in this $399 item. Last, we also use Google Earth to look up different places all around the world. We identify the different climates and countries all around the whole world. That is amazing. That is why I believe that iPads help students learn.
Just as a side note, that $399 figure is accurate as of today. When Sorab originally wrote that piece, I think he had typed in $600. So maybe by the time we purchase them for everyone, they'll be down to $200. Next, I'd like to introduce Isaac Pimenta.
Who doesn't want an iPad in class? Keynote, for example, is a great presentation tool. There are all the animation effects, themes, and you can present your facts in a fun way. You also get to share your knowledge with the entire class, making everybody smarter. Next, there are games like Rocket Math and Beat the Computer. Both games are insanely fun. In Rocket Math, you can create an epic, funny, or plain rocket, then go on missions that involve adding, counting, or telling time. You can earn money using multiplication and division skills. In Beat the Computer, you work on the amount of time it takes you to solve certain number models. Lastly, you have the internet where you can see photos, videos, and articles containing facts. The internet has no limits. You can discover information you didn't know. That's why everybody in grades three, four, and five should have iPads.
Next, I'd like to introduce Morgan Goodwin.
I believe that iPads are a great learning tool. They can take the place of expensive textbooks, safe paper, and have great references, calendars, timers, and utilities. This goes on and on for adults, but here is how they are a great learning tool for children. Firstly, they have great math games such as Division Dash and Rocket Math. Also, they are, there are apps that match the everyday mathematics. Next, there is an app called Show Me, an interactive whiteboard where kids can show you answers and strategies instead of a million hands and voices saying, "Pick me, pick me." That's just for the teachers. The iPad is also great for art with apps like Doodle Buddy and Drawcast. Those apps are like Show Me but equipped with art tools such as markers and paint modes. Also, the iPad has internet access where you can research and make remarkable discoveries. Also, you can turn on settings where kids can't see inappropriate things. Internet is a safe and beneficial place now. Yay! I found the word beneficial using the dictionary app and spell the right with the spell check. We also use the internet to read Scholastic articles for free. I could stay here and tell you about the amazing iPad, but let's leave some remaining memories so I can take more notes about the iPad. We can reuse the iPads without buying new ones every year unlike textbooks which do get destroyed. The list goes on and on for what the phenomenal iPad can do.
Just so you know, in settings, that was something I did not teach the children, but because they are allowed to experiment with the iPad, they found settings and saw where there were certain blocked sites and apps and...
I'm shocked.
Yeah, so... Because I know that was a concern with many people initially, oh, what if something pops up on the internet? So I hope that puts aside some of those concerns. Next, I'd like to introduce Jasmine Blatt.
These are a few reasons why iPads are learning tools. First, we can use them for ELA. For example, if part of the class is doing a play, you can write the script in notes. Also, if we are doing a graphic organizer, we can use an app called Total Recall. Also, if we are doing a presentation, we have an app called Keynote. So that's how we use iPads in ELA. Next, we use the iPads for math. For example, when we need our Everyday Mathematics Student Reference Book, our math textbook, we can read it on the iPad. Also, when we are doing morning message, we use an app called Show Me. The teacher will tell us, the teacher will tell us the math problem, and we will put down the important details and figure out the problem. When we are finished, we will hold up the iPad and the teacher will come and check it. For math intervention, we have choices. So we have everyday mathematics apps and other math apps. Also, we can use the iPad for science. Our textbook is online and is interactive. You can click the speaker to hear the text out loud. Our teacher has a website, and we can use the science links to learn certain lessons. Last, there is an internet app that we can use like it is a computer. So even though the iPad may seem fine, you can use them for learning tools.
Next, I have a piece called "I Persuade" by Tony Patron.
There are multiple reasons why I think iPads are an awesome idea. First, I think there are some really fun and educational apps on this electronic system like, for math, we have Show Me, Rocket Math, HD Calculator, and regular calculator. And last, virtual manipul, and last, virtual manipulators. That was just the math. For art, there's Drawcast, Doodle Buddy, and Color Uncovered. For reading, I have Puffin for reading books online and a trusty dictionary. So say goodbye to paper and pencil. Now, now that you've heard some everyday regular applications, I'll tell you about my favorite apps out of that selection. I like Keynote because I love art and love Rocket Math because I learn math and earn points by correctly answering questions. When you earn enough money, you can launch a rocket of your design into space. Last, I think every child from fourth to 12th grade should hold the knowledge of an iPad. Thank you and good night.
Just as one other aside, I just had another thing I wanted to share with you. Every application that the students have mentioned with the exception of Keynote, which is similar to PowerPoint, is free. So all of those apps were free education. Next, I would like to introduce Matthew Thompson.
Reasons why we should have iPads. The iPad is a spectacular tool for math, writing, science, and all more. The iPad will help us because we would only go to computer lab once a week. The internet helps us explore, research, and discover. On the iPad, Scholastic News is for free. Instead of paying for science and reading and math reference books, we can get them for free. Also, the free math games that help us with our multiplication, division tables, also with our fractions and decimals. On the iPad, we have notes so we don't have to get up and get another pencil. For spelling, we can use the dictionary. By using the iPad videotaping, we can make videos that include math, reading, science. This is the reason why schools should have iPads.
Okay, so I think you got the theme of freedom. Everything's free. So everything just to clarify is not free. Of course, the school purchased the math, everyday math curriculum and the science curriculum, but there are interactive texts that are available to us. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Henigan, and thank you to her students. Mr. Wilson, I'd like to ask you to come up next. And Mr. Wilson is also here with three of his students tonight.
Okay. I'm not going to say much. I'm just gonna, if there's time left over, I'll show you some things, but otherwise, I just want to let students talk about what they've done. I want to, you know, I don't think anyone can put it any more eloquently than the last group of students did. There's just a lot you can do. And I, you know, it supports so many different things that we do in class, but enough of me.
Mr. Abbott?
So when we first started using the iPads, it took some getting used to with the certain apps and websites that we were supposed to use, but as Mr. Wilson always says, when you are confused is when you learn the best. So we do, after a while, we picked up and started to really able to use it for what it was worth. And some interesting apps that we have are Paper Planes, which is like an app where the whole class is connected to one software, and we can send notes to each other through the class and also to the teacher. So we can do assignments through this, and it's quick access, so we can send Mr. Wilson an assignment, he looks at it and gives it back within the class. So it's a way to quickly and efficiently do things. And also, the resources we have on it is internet sources in class. For example, we have rhetorical analysis that we have to do on Martin Luther King. And you can read a piece of paper and kind of get the gist of what he was trying to say and what motion he put into it, but when you go on the iPad, you can use YouTube or other apps to actually hear the speeches. And in that case, we got to actually feel what he was trying to portray, and so it also added another dynamic to the rhetorical analysis of which is allowed to do that. And another thing we use is blogs. We have tons of blogs and stuff, and it's a way for like us to write freely and use our ideas and just not restricted, you know, just free writing about whatever we need to write about. So I feel that iPads have just really helped our classroom.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, these are juniors, is that correct?
These are juniors, yes indeed.
Thank you.
They are in the AP Language and Composition class. And AP Language and Composition is focused a lot on language and rhetoric, so these are kind of focused.
In the English, AP English class, it became a lot easier, I felt, when we used the iPads, and it made it a lot more fun for us because we're all tech savvy and we like to use technology. It becomes fun to us to be able to use it because we used to be in on our phones and just be able to use those, and it feels like that. We believe that we are more likely to do assignments when we have them given to us on the iPad because it's easier to type and get into a flow than when you're writing and your hand can sometimes hurt or cramp up and get hard to write. And it's very beneficial to have the iPads because when you're on the iPads, if you don't know something, you can go right to the internet, look it up, and get the answer right there. You don't have to worry about not knowing the answer, having to go home, go on your computer. And maybe if you have a slow computer, it makes it harder if you have a virus or something. The iPads rarely freeze also because Macs, it's very hard for them to get viruses, and especially on the iPads because you don't get pop-ups and all the problems that computers do. So it makes it a lot better using the iPads in class. And you haven't, you don't really have much distractions because you're doing your own thing and you're kind of in-depth into the iPad and not worrying about what other people are doing or anything else around you because you love technology and it's just fun to use.
I also feel that these iPads have been nothing but beneficial to our classroom. I know one app that I personally like is one we recently got called Amoto, which is, it's a, the format of the app is one like Facebook, but it's all student-based and the teacher is pretty much like the head of the classroom in the app, and we're broken up into groups within the app. And that way, we're just able to do assignments on it, but the format is so, so like close to being Facebook. It's just fun to use, and it's just a lot easier, I think. But also, I believe that they, these iPads are beneficial to us in the classroom, but I think they're really important for us as students because in the world that is consumed by technology, I feel that it is imperative that we learn to use the technology so we don't fall behind when we're trying to get a career 10, 15, 20 years down the road. And the interview and the job is all focused around this new type of technology. So I feel that it's really important to be able to learn how to use it when we're in high school so we don't fall behind in the future. I know this is just the pilot program of the iPads, but one day it would be awesome if the future students could take them home, just saying. And that's about it. I just love the iPads.
Mr. Brzjoli, is it easy to use for like a school committee member?
Oh, yeah. He would love it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd, I'd just like to, to say a little bit that, that I think, um, one of the advantages to taking these home, if kids can get access to them 24 hours, is that I can put the books on the, on the iPad and they can read them there. Um, I have set up all the kids with, um, a Dropbox account. And whatever they create, they can save to the Dropbox. And even if you can't print off of the iPad, you can open it up on a laptop anywhere in the school or at home and print from there. Or I have these little nifty things on my webpage called like Jot It and Drop It To Me, where the student can go home, take the, the document off of their iPad, put it on their computer, go to Drop It To Me, stick it in there, and it sends, comes right to me, and no paper ever changes hands. Um, I have all my, um, supporting documents, my agendas, my, um, nightly reading logs, essays, things that I get them to do, are all in a Dropbox folder that the kids can access from the homepage. They can download them to their iPads or their computers at home. And they can do all the reading, all the writing, and no paper ever has to, has to change hands. Um, I have on my, my webpage, a place called Book Stuff that gives them a place where they can go and, and it has a blog on it. It has some discussion space on it. It has podcast book talks that I've made on the different books we do that they can view. And it, it, it integrates music and film and text with, um, with what they're studying and whatever book we happen to be doing. And it tries to explain how the different arts work together and how it fits into context with history. Um, with the Imoto site, I have set up some things where students can go and they can carry on these discussions with each other. I have a, I have a thing on the, on the Imoto site called Ask Historian. Um, we're reading a book right now called The Grapes of Wrath. The Grapes of Wrath is set in a historical moment in American, in America. And a lot of, of what the story revolves around keys off of things that happened in history. So, um, rather than my telling them what this is all about, um, the groups ask each other, hey, I wanna know what this is. And the group, they're paired with each other. And the group that gets asked the question has to go hunt it down and find out what it is and report back. And it gives the students an, an avenue for teaching each other as opposed to having to listen to me all the time. And, uh, it gives them a way of, um, through the different kinds of things that they submit, um, it gives them a way of sharing things. And, and understand too, that most of what they share is done in a public forum, which means that, um, what they share is not just shared with each other. People who wanna come from, uh, other places can see it too. I have a thing called, I think it's WilsonJunior.Posters or something like that, um, where I've been keeping a web log of, of every, of what we've been doing with, with this. Um, I did a, a web piece, a, I did a blog piece a few months ago called By Design, about designing a classroom around something like this. And today, I got a comment from somebody in Barcelona. So, you know, there's no telling where, you know, you're going to be hearing from. It, it puts people in context with, contact with a larger world. I have often said to people that I think one of the problems that, that we have with public educa- with education anywhere is that, um, you know, in the Middle Ages, no one ever saw any place beyond, you know, they went to the end of their block and that was about as far as they ever went. Um, in, in the public school systems, we're still like, that's pretty much where we are. A kid grows up in a community and these are the only people they meet for a long time, until they go to college. And then all of a sudden, they're thrust into this much larger world. Um, one of the things that this can do is open up the world a little larger, make it a bigger place so that kids are not, potentially, are not just interacting with each other, but have the opportunity to interact. You know, Mr. St. Julian has a sister high school thing with, with Cape Verde. And they teach each other. And, and it, it can be some really, really exciting stuff. And, and I think the iPod pad is a, is a useful way of opening that up. It provides a lot of interesting tools. It provides ways of getting things done. Um, the next time you go into a high school or middle school building and you see a kid walking around with a 60-pound pack on their back, ask yourself, wouldn't an iPad be simple? Um, I'd like to open up the committee to, uh, ask questions of these, both the students as well as the teachers. But I just wanna assure the committee that this is a time for questions, not decisions. So the floor is now open for questions. And, and I, once again, greatly appreciate everybody's attendance and participation here tonight. Who would like to start?
I'm all set.
Okay. Ken?
Uh, sure.
I mean, sorry, Mike.
Um, as you just mentioned, um, maybe going with an, an iPad instead of a 60-pound bag. Uh, you know, you know, the traditional laptop, you know. Um, with the iPads, do, do you see them? I- i- is it really, is there anything that you can't do on a computer that you can do on an iPad? Is it just a matter of size?
There's a lot of things you can do on a computer that you can't do on an iPad. An iPad is not a replacement for the computer. It is, um, you know, it's, it's a toolkit. It provides some, some tools, but it, it doesn't give you everything that a computer does. Um, but there are, there are apps from which you can move anything you do on here onto like a desktop or laptop. One thing, um, that I encounter with, 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 um, I've been trying to integrate technology into my classroom for 15 or so years. Uh, and it requires getting access to a computer lab. When I started doing this, I was the, the only teacher just about who was using the computer lab on a regular basis. So I, you know, I was able to get in just about any time I wanted and, and do anything I wanted. But then, as time progresses and more people start coming into the system, let's see what these things can do and start using them, everybody wants to be in the computer lab. Now, uh, with, with something like this, a student can go in, they can do some work on it. And if they don't have a computer at home, we can still get them into a computer lab where they can get the stuff off the, off the iPad if they need to and, 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 and take care of it. Um, the thing that this does, you know, going the other way, I don't know if you've ever tried to read a text on a computer screen. I, I can speak for myself, it gives me a headache after about five, 10 minutes. Um, the iPad is much easier on the eye. It's a much easier resource to read from. So in that respect, it, it, it comes closer to a book than a computer screen does, and it does something that a computer can't do. So they more, they complement each other more than replace each other.
I remember it was, um, I think the late 90s. Um, I was, I was attending Bentley College and they, they, they went to this new requirement that everyone had to have a laptop. And laptops were expensive, much more expensive back then. Um, and if you couldn't afford one, you could rent one through them. You know, um, just, you know, I, I, I wonder if things are coming to that now, you know, with iPads.
You know, just, just something to think about. When I started college, everybody had to have a typewriter. And, um, um, you went off to college with a typewriter and a slide rule. Um, and my typewriter cost me $200 in 1969 dollars. Um, I bet, if you took it $200, $19.69 and, and re, and looked at what they are today, it probably isn't that far off from what, uh, an iPad is or an inexpensive laptop. Um, it, it felt like a lot of money when I had to buy my, my typewriter. So I, I understand that. But, um, I, it, it, I, I don't, my only point is I'm not sure that it's that much more money than what I had to spend when I went off to college.
It's actually a lot less. 200 bucks then was a, is a fortune today, inflation-adjusted. Um, you all set, Mike?
I'm all set, yeah.
Cliff?
No, I just wanna commend the students and the teachers. Um, I just have firsthand knowledge of John's work with computers because we worked together for a while. Um, and John was a pioneer and I trust his opinion. And, uh, I, I think that even for me, I'd be hard-pressed not to see the advantages of having an iPad in a kid's hands. Um, so we'll do our best.
Rhonda?
This is the best night since I've been on the school committee, um, hearing this presentation. And, um, I would love to take a vote to expand the program tonight because after hearing from all of you, I know, it's not gonna happen. But from hearing from all of you, I couldn't see why any member wouldn't feel just the absolute enjoyment, but especially the learning that is, um, has been, has come out of this pilot. Uh, the, I, I heard more stories from Mr. Palladino earlier today about, um, some of the things that are going on with the iPad. But the thing that's, that's, that strikes me about this pilot is that it really is promoting individual learning. It's allowing each student to, you know, what I loved to hear tonight was about their favorite things. What, what really, um, you know, excited them about it. And we, we talk a lot about those types of things at the school committee level around academics and, you know, how can we get it down to that individual learning? Finding out from an individual student what's gonna be best for them to be able to get them to understand the curriculum. So again, that's, I just want you to know something that I heard very loudly and I think that it's something that is a great argument for why we need to, um, expand this program. I don't have a lot of questions, um, because I think that you answered a lot of mine tonight just by your presentation. Um, but I'll just make a statement because we are on TV that if, if the community, um, can see this tonight, I think that would go a long way in looking at putting additional resources in the school. We talk about this time and time again, that we are much farther back than a lot of the schools, um, around the country, um, in our state and also around the country when it comes to technology. And if this doesn't make the argument louder than any other argument that's been made before, we have to do whatever we can to get more technology into the school system. So thank you for being here and all of the work. And, you know, again, I'm gonna fight as hard as I can to get this program, um, to expand.
Jessica?
Um, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to state that the students who weren't in the pilot were extremely jealous of those who are. Just gonna state that.
Fair point. Barry?
I just wanna compliment the students and the staff. Um, you know, this was one of these, um, ready, fire, aim kind of things where we, um, decided to get the resources. Um, we did a wide dispersment, I mean, mul- multiple grade levels, multiple schools, so that we could really see the benefits in all different places. But I have enjoyed, um, seeing the communication between the various staff members, talking about different apps that they have found and sharing with each other. It, it's been an exciting time because I think the adults are learning as much as the students. And, um, just the excitement for learning. Um, and, you know, I concur with Rhonda about this is something that we need to do, except the realist in me looks at my budget and, you know, makes it difficult. But it is something we need to find a way to continue.
In my family, I was known as the person who would always argue the other side. Uh, it didn't really matter what it was. It was just more fun to have the other side represented. Um, I'm not doing this for fun, however. Um, I believe there always is an other side. Um, I, I will state upfront, however, that I'm an enthusiast, uh, with respect to technology. And Mr. Wilson certainly knows that as well as my colleagues who wants to take a vote tonight. Um, the hard reality, and for you students, you'll discover this rather quickly when you get into the business world, um, is that there are lots of things that feel good. There are lots of things that you might want, that your intuition and all sorts of other emotions tell you is a good idea. Um, but in, in business, um, and whenever there's finite resources, you have to take a real hard look. So Dr. Rubenovich was absolutely right. It was a ready-fire-aim project, and he's not guilty of that. He was probably pushed by people on the school committee to do that. So if it was ready-fire-aim, don't blame him. I want you to imagine a drug that got approved by the FDA for clinical trials. And it was given to a whole bunch of people, uh, who had a certain disease. And when asked, um, about it after months of taking the drug, they were, the response from the people, the patients was, "Made me feel really good." But it didn't do anything for the disease. We need to make sure that iPads don't make you feel really good, aren't a lot of fun, but in fact, are not enhancing learning. So my hard reality is I need to make sure that AP scores rise, that all other these, these objective measurements, in fact, see a positive. Now, I admit that there are lots of things beyond standardized tests. Lots of things. Um, but the hard reality is we need to make sure that we're spending your parents' money really wisely. And it's not just because it feels good to do it and we're all so glad that you're here and they're really pleased that you expressed yourself so, so well, especially, uh, especially from those so young. Um, so we'll be taking a very hard look at this. Uh, there are lots of questions. There are lots of priorities for the limited dollars. Uh, but I repeat, I'm a huge enthusiast for this project, uh, but we have an incredible responsibility to make sure we use money wisely. Thank you very much. Any other comments or thoughts you'd like to share before we go on to the next subject? Terry? John?
I might just say, Mr. Swett, that, um, putting the iPads in the hands of the students gives them access to much more information and therefore many more things to learn. And I do believe that the standardized test scores will go up if we give the kids access to much more learning than we can do at the moment.
I certainly want to believe that. John, any closing thought?
My, my only feeling is this, is that, um, most teachers, their number one goal is to provoke curiosity. Because when a student is curious, they'll teach themselves. And anything that will get a student, um, to investigate things on their own, that, that's what is like the Ask Historian thing on my, my webpage. That, that's what goes behind it. I don't believe in panaceas. I don't think there's anything out there that's gonna cure that all that ails you, whether it's in the schools or whether it's in the drug or whatever. It's all work. And it all depends on, on what, what the teacher does, with what the tools that they have and how they're able to motivate students and how curious students are to find things out. Um, but as a tool, it provides a lot of avenues that students can explore and, 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 uh, to a certain degree, satiate their curiosity. Hopefully build a hundred percent.
Robin?
I would just like to add that, um, in my classroom, students who are reluctant readers because they're struggling, and I don't mean a diagnosed learning disability, but for whatever reason, probably, I would attribute most of it to a lack of time reading by the time they get to me in 4th grade. Those students, and, and again, I invite you, anytime you'd like to watch this, will pick up an iPad of their own volition now and sit and read. And there is research, tons of research, that will prove that the only way to become a better reader is to read. And so I don't know how that could not translate into higher scores.
Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm glad that you mentioned research because the thing that we have on our side also is the unbelievable amount of research that's been done when it comes to how technology improves learning. And the test scores and the data is there. There are academies that are built just around using technology for learning. Um, so I think that, that is something that is also, um, that, you know, that we have to take into account as we're looking at where to put the resources. But I agree with my colleague that, yes, we were having a difficult couple of years, three, four, 10 years, when it comes to our budget. Um, but, you know, I said it before and I'll say it again. The reason why this pilot, we were able to do this pilot was because of a grant. And so being able, the nice thing about this compared to other initiatives is that you, iPads will last for a while. And so that's the reason why, I mean, I want us to think outside the box when it comes to how we actually pay for something like this. And what we heard tonight is that it's important. I do agree. Let's see the data, but there is, um, data out there that proves that technology absolutely goes a long way in helping with learning.
Yes?
I just wanted to add that my son was part of this, this pilot too, in a different school and, uh, in the same grade, uh, 4th grade. And, uh, yeah, I can speak to the enthusiasm and the engagement, certainly. Uh, he has two teachers and when he, his ELA teacher is the one who is the pilot. And sometimes I forget he has two teachers because he always talks about is that teacher. So, um, yeah, there's, I, I definitely see, um, see the point that you're... So, yeah, I definitely see, see the point that Jessica was making.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Denise, you're up.
Now, get home and study, guys.
Yeah. Fill scores up for Mr. Sweat.
Poor Jeff Sweat.
We're not picking on Cliff tonight. Which would be the perfect opportunity to-
I've got that all under control.
Are they close to Cliff?
Yeah. Kinda concerned. Denise, is it just you tonight?
No.
Oh, no, she has a committee with her.
Where's they go? Where's me at?
Please have them come on down. Or are they close enough?
Just now.
Well, please introduce them even if they just are moral support.
All right, I will do that. So, good evening and I'd like to thank Dr. Rabinovich and the committee for letting us come here tonight, me, to talk about our project at East. We're very, very excited about it and hopefully tonight after you hear what we have going on, you'll be just as excited-
Scott?
-as we are.
I just, you deserve more courtesy, I just wanted to make sure that people could hear you. Go ahead, thank you, Denise.
So, let me just introduce the committee and many members of our committee are here tonight. We had parents and teachers as well as administration on our committee and Mrs. Ames, Mrs. Siemens, Mrs. Sandy and Mrs. Morgan back there, as well as Mrs. Cody and Mrs. Philly and who are unable to come tonight. So, the first thing we did on our committee was to come up with a slogan that really represented the vision for what we wanted our playground to look like and also keeping in mind the importance of outdoor play for our preschool students. So, our slogan was Building Our Future: Learning Through Play, which we felt really represented what we were trying to do. So, here's our current playground space over at East. And at East, we have 120 preschoolers right now and we have that small plastic structure and then we have the swing set, which has four bays and two, four, we have five swings and then the last bay is left open for an adaptive swing, which we bring in and out for our students who have a lot of issues with their upper body and can't access a regular swing. So, we do have an adaptive swing for them. So, here is an outline of our proposed playground space and we will be doing this in phases. So, you can see that's the whole thing, the structure, we have all kinds of cute little things, which you'll see in a minute, and we also have a trike path that is going to be, go around the playground. So, our preschoolers with their phys ed class as well as their physical therapy will be able to access that trike path and use tricycles around that, which is a very large part of their gross motor development. And you can't see it here, but we are gonna leave a wide open space as well for the phys ed classes and for running, which is also very important for our preschoolers to be able to get out there and run. So, this is a picture of the structure and this is phase one and there's a front and a back, so that's what it will look like. And I do want to mention too that the structure is, the equipment is made from recycled milk jugs and the company that we're going through told us that purchasing this alone, we are gonna save 22,464 recycled milk jugs and those will be saved from going to a landfill. So, we are also recycling in this project as well. So, this is phase two and actually we found out that we are getting an adult bench and the two preschool benches as part of phase one. We were able to do that as well. So, everything else is going to be part of phase two, so that won't be in the initial installation of the structure. So, the timeline, so to date, some trees and limbs have been removed from the playground and a lot of the trees were rotted and the limbs were rotted and they were unsafe and they needed to come out. DigSafe has checked the site and the initial site prep work has already been completed. The week of May 21st, the installation of our new playground is going to begin and once that's in, then we are gonna be looking for volunteers to help us spread the ground cover throughout the playground. And then when all that's done, the trike path will be installed and the swings also have to be brought up to code. We do have swings right now, but there's two in each bay and there can only be one in each bay and the swings themselves, the metal on the, on the swings, the chain links are in not so good shape. So, those will be replaced as well. So, our goal is to have the playground available for use before the end of the school year. So, we're hoping at least by that last week, the students will be able to get out and utilize that. And we are gonna continue with our fundraising efforts for phase two of the playground. So, fundraising so far, the PTA, the Village PTA helped us to purchase these bands, this was our very first fundraiser, and it has our slogan on it, Building Our Future: Learning Through Play, and they are for sale for a dollar. And I think so far with this fundraiser, we have about $130? $139 for that one. And our other fundraiser was our Bags to School fundraiser. And that was a two-day event and it was a clothing recycle project. And what it was, for two days, parents were able and community members to bring their bags of used clothing, drapes, purses, belts, linens, and we collected them for two days and in a minute I'll show you some pictures of that. And then on Saturday, we were there all day from 10 to 1:00 and then a big truck came, took all our stuff away, they weighed it and it was, we had 3,200 pounds of used clothing that were donated from our students, staff and people in the community and that fundraiser earned us $400. So, on Friday, we started. So, that's our community room and you can just see how many bags of clothing we had and I, you know, we tried to capture the amount of bags that we had. And then there was one of our students who came on that Saturday with his family to drop off his bag, so it was definitely a community effort. And I don't, again, you can't really tell, but the bags went from the school all the way out to the stairs. There were just tons and tons of bags. And on Saturday, we were there and we were like little kids. Every time a car drove up, we got very excited, we greeted them, "Thank you for coming," we helped them take the bags out of the car. It was just, it was a great day. And then we had to load all the bags into the truck and there we are, very excited with our event that day. So, our next step will be to organize the volunteers to help spread the ground cover. We are gonna plan for a ribbon cutting ceremony when phase one of the project is complete and we're hoping to incorporate that with our, with a family picnic. And usually we have a fun day for preschoolers at the end of the year and we're not sure with the construction if we're gonna be able to do that and with the lateness of the school year, we're probably gonna have to incorporate everything all in one day. We are gonna continue with our fundraising efforts and we'd like to keep the community informed about the events that we are having. And we'd like to thank our very generous anonymous donor that really got this project going for us, the Minnetonka and Hammond East Village PTA. They purchased the bracelets for us to get started and they also were able to give us some funding as well. The East Wareham families and staff, the Wareham community, Gold World for selling our bracelets and collecting bags as well, and all the people who donated bags to our Bags to School project. And that's it.
Thank you. Questions?
I have one.
Yes.
For, I know with the Deacon's Playground that they do open up to the community when school's not in session. Will the same thing be happening here with this playground? Will the community be able to use it?
Absolutely. I believe it's a school property and anybody can come and use it and we're hoping that there's a lot of families on Knoll's Ave right there that currently hang out in that space, so hopefully those families will be able to actually do something, you know, in that space as well.
So, it's a, it's a good message to get out that it's not only a benefit to the school, but it's a benefit to the community and the families that live in and around there, that they're able to enjoy this improvement. Great job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Excited for you guys.
Mike?
All set, thank you.
Okay. What is the surface of the trike path? Just curious. Is it like a clay or is it, it's not sand?
No, it's, it's gonna be asphalt.
So, it's gonna be paved around there?
Yes. It'll be a paved loop around the, around the playground structure.
And are you halfway to, it sounds like you have to do a lot more fundraising?
We have to do some, we have to do some. I, if I can. For phase two, we have some really neat little things and I don't know offhand what each one of them costs individually, but here you can see we have a little gas station that's gonna go around the trike path so they can stop and fill up their cars, tic-tac-toe.
How much a gallon?
It's free at our school. Butterfly pods and things like that. So, like, again, I don't know how much each, each one of those costs individually and maybe over the summer or in the fall, we'll regroup again, we'll see what money we have left over and how much more we need to continue.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much, we're excited. I would volunteer to help to spread ground cover, but I can't even walk, my advanced chronology, but, but I give you a good alternative. I think if you touch base with the principal of the high school, I bet you can get some high school kids with real strong backs to come and help you.
We actually, we talked about that. Mrs. Cody was even thinking that one of the sports teams could come and do some community service and help spread that. So, once we get to that point, we will definitely-
Good luck, job well done.
Thank you very much.
Denise, just a quick question. So, phase one is fully funded, is that correct?
Yes.
So, it's really just phase two that, that the additional fundraising is being done?
Right. And then I think once we get the structure in, we see what else we want, we might add some things to that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rabinovich, we've moved things around. Universal Full Day Kindergarten, please.
I'm gonna ask, we have some members of our committee here this evening, ask them to join Anna and I down here. Mrs. Panerisi? Mrs. Panerisi's hiding in the back. It's okay. You're in the element. As you know, when I presented the proposal to the school committee a couple of months ago, this was a study that was begun much the same way as the iPad pilot and that is Ready, Aim, Fire. We were in a discussion, in a meeting, the principals and Ms. Miranda and I, talking about our kindergarten packet for the upcoming school year. And I shared as a matter of information that there was a grant available to do a study for transition to universal full day K. And they all looked at me and said, "So, why aren't we doing that?" So, the grant was due 48 hours later. We decided it was a good thing to go for and that's what we, and did, is literally submitted a grant within 48 hours. It was interesting because I had to, after writing the grant at a conference that Dr. Rabinovich and Mr. Lozan and I were at, literally, I chased down a FedEx truck in Bellingham and gave him a grant. So, that's how this grant was submitted. We received approximately $30,000 to complete the study and to, if approved, to outfit new full day classrooms. Universal Full Day Kindergarten Committee is comprised of the people you see listed here. Ann Cote, a parent from the Minnetonka Forest School, Rhonda Vegan, a parent from the Hammond School, who is one of our school committee members, so she's served in both roles, Judith McLaughlin, special education teacher, Jaclyn Tricker, special education teacher, and Jaclyn is here with us this evening, thank you Jaclyn, Darlene McQuade, another kindergarten teacher, Denise Tobin, preschool special education teacher, and you've already heard from Denise and she is here with us this evening, Cheryl Moran, instructional leader from the Deacon's School, Nancy Ames, assistant principal for Minnetonka Forest, Hammond and East, Joan Siemens, principal, Christine Panerisi, elementary principal, Mary Morgan, early childhood coordinator, Anna Miranda, myself, and we had to give credit to Elise 'cause she is a secretary extraordinaire who compiled all of the data from our surveys. Just a quick review, the current program we have is a full five-day program with parent choice of full or half day. Students are held to the same learning expectations, there are readiness skills, all of the early academics provided for foundation of mathematics and literacy achievement. You've seen this in the brochure. You know that we try to, the teachers address students' needs through differentiated instruction, socialization, peer relation skills. Parents have the choice and you see the huge discrepancy in time, two and a half hours daily or six hours daily. Unfortunately, that choice is often made based on a financial consideration because of tuition. So, the options we submitted in our grant proposal, that was submitted also here to the school committee, were the three before you. Offer full day K to all incoming five-year-old students regardless of income and as a result, the district would receive a full 1.0 per capita funding through Chapter 70 for all kindergarten students and provide parents with an opt-out from the full day program so they could pick up their children midday. The second option was to offer full day kindergarten to all students and to continue collecting tuition, which should reduce our Chapter 70 per capita count. Or thirdly, to leave things as they were or as they are. For the process of study, we met as a committee and designed the process that we would, first of all, survey all parents involved, but not just parents of incoming students. We wanted to hear from parents of our current preschool students who are looking at kindergarten in two years, current kindergarten students' parents and current grade one students and if their parents look back on their kindergarten experience. We also, our committee members also met and talked with teachers in addition to this. The committee also, with Ms. Miranda's help, reviewed financial costs and revenues of the current program. We reviewed other kindergarten programs and cost in other districts from what information that she was able to glean. We had hoped to meet with an assistant superintendent from an area district who had gone through this transition, but due to a crisis in her school was not able to come. So, we didn't have the firsthand conversation, but we did look at the data, looked at our own survey data and then met to come up with our own conclusions or the college's conclusions and recommendations and prepare this presentation. And this computer is more sensitive than mine. Very briefly, and you've all seen this PowerPoint, we had 168 surveys from the groups that were listed earlier. The surveys were received from all grade levels in which the survey was distributed. So, we had varying numbers of participation, as you will see, but we had all groups represented. The greatest number of surveys were received from our current preschoolers and our incoming students, 93 of 168 surveys. And that would almost make sense 'cause those are the people who will be most directly affected. The overwhelming response in all of these surveys was strongly in favor of a universal full day kindergarten program without tuition. I know the data up on the screen is not huge for our TV cameras, but you have it in front of you as well and you can see on each of the questions, the cumulative average was between a 4.5 and a 4.6 on a five-point scale in favor of a comprehensive full day kindergarten program that would allow for additional time for academics, enrichment, opportunities to learn and opportunities to work cooperatively and grow socially. The only low score was satisfaction with the current K program and that is where we heard the most in comments from parents in the frustration of having to choose and of not feeling their students were getting the same amount of learning- opportunities because of time in the half-day program. Tuition has become a huge factor for many of our families. So, satisfaction with the current optional program was at a low 2.7. Some of the comments from parents and guardians are there on the screen, and I want to say, as we went through the surveys and the committee is here, it was hard to choose sample comments and not appear that we were slanting it and only giving you the positive ones. So, we looked hard, but they were overwhelmingly positive. And parents were very articulate in expressing themselves. I think it says a lot with that fourth bullet. "I am undecided as to whether or not I want my daughter to go full-time. However, as of now, we would not be able to afford it, so we would not have an option." I think that says a lot. It's giving the option to families to provide the best possible foundation for their children. And the last bullet, "My daughter did full-day kindergarten last year, I saw tremendous advantages. She was ahead of friends doing half-day. Though it was expensive, it was worth it." We have a couple of other comments from parents about specifically about curriculum and about the idea of this scary transition to full-day. And so, that is where the opt-out will be a good transition for some families. Still, by offering full-day K and offering it without tuition, we are giving a huge benefit to our students and to the families of the community. Comments from our teachers, these were actual comments that members of our committee heard and learned as they talked to their colleagues, or as they talked to other parents. Most importantly, the idea that the last bullet there, a full-day kindergarten program increases students' learning opportunities. It's not just time, it's learning time, and it's allowing children at these very young and huge range of developmental abilities and attention that they can learn and have those opportunities to learn. It also will address the more rigorous standards that are now part of our world because of Common Core. Anna and I went through an awful lot of figures and a lot of details, and wanted to bring the information to you in the most straightforward, simple, and yet clarified message that we could. And so, we spent a few hours last Friday working on this, and thought that by giving you a split screen, we could show current program and the cost of the current program if it were to stay the same in FY 2013. The cost of a universal full-day K program without tuition for the same school year, FY 13, and the change in Chapter 70 support for Chapter 78. Anna, would you wanna go through this slide?
Yes, and actually, you know, this is really pleasant for me, because in my role, especially this year, I haven't had a lot of good financial news to give to you. So, I actually, I'm enjoying the fact that this, really, the bottom line has the potential to have a positive outcome. The current cost, we support 10 teacher salaries and 12 part-time paris salaries right now. With the universal full day, we would need 12 full-time teachers, and we actually can keep the 12 paris. Currently, this year, it's 11.5, because Deacon is only running one half-day program and not the other, but the body is actually there, and we are paying a salary and that person does intervention. For transportation, so you look at the figures, the staff salaries right now costing us $683,000, and in the proposed, $777,000. The, we looked at the benefits of transportation, you know, could we take some cost savings there? We currently run four midday routes. We would save in driver salaries $21,054 in the proposal, if we were to eliminate that half-day transportation. We, I examined whether or not we would also be able to take a benefit in terms of medical benefits, but it turns out, we won't be able to. I sat down with Mr. Tetro, and we actually plugged the actual people in, and what, if we eliminated those four runs. Currently, there are only three of the current individuals doing the runs have medical. They would have bumping rights, and they could actually bump and replace three drivers that do east preschool midday runs. So, there really would not, you know, technically be a savings, because right now, the three drivers that do the east preschool run do not have benefits. So, it's a wash. It really, there's no advantage or disadvantage in terms of the medical benefits. But the cost of the salaries, and then, and what you don't see here would also be a savings in fuel, a savings in wear and tear, in addition to what we would save for the cost of salaries. Then we get to, we looked at the expenses for instructional supplies. Currently, in this exploratory grant, there are monies, and I believe it's like almost $12,000, has been dedicated out of the $30,000 to outfit, to purchase supplies, should we then, you know, get the approval to move forward and actually establish the universal full-day programs. And our current grant that we have this year also has some monies in it that could also be used. So, it wouldn't, it's not gonna cost us anything in terms of instructional supplies and outfitting the classrooms. Nancy Ames made it real clear to me, "We've got stuff, don't worry, we can get things into the classrooms," in terms of just other materials that we do have available for the kindergarten curriculum. Then we'll go down to revenue. In revenue, for the kindergarten program, there are really three sources of revenue. We have your Chapter 70 aid per pupa that we receive. We have our grant allotment, and then also tuition. So, those three sources in the current program. When I did the numbers, basically in this current year, the, what we took in for tuition was $75,094. Tuition's really been dwindling. For example, in FY 11, it was $124,920 that we received in revenue. What the DESI has been doing is that it seems like every year, they are lowering the threshold in order to make it more accessible to families financially. So, for example, we really are not, you know, if you looked at three years ago, if the cutoff was here, now, we have so many more families that are eligible at that cutoff that we've ever had before. And I'm looking, and right now, I mean, you look at the state of the economy, I'm sure, you know, it would be a struggle for parents, and that's why we're seeing less parents at the higher tuition levels. That was a real difference that I saw from previous years, going back like through four or five years, much less at those higher levels that really helped to really support the program. Currently, this revenue from the tuition is utilized to pay the paraprofessional salaries, solely used for paraprofessional salaries. We're looking at...
Just to be clear, you're saying the $368,105 is used to pay paraprofessional salaries?
No, no.
The $75,094.
Thank you.
So, now, then we could come down to the grants, that's our tuition. Now, if we come over, we'll have a zero, you know, allotment for tuition with 13 with the proposal. We start looking at our grants right now. We're currently receiving funding for eight full-day classrooms, six at $10,880, and I believe, yeah, two at $5,247, for a total of $75,777. The grant is actually, we get a little bit more, but we have to dedicate funds for supplies. We also have to dedicate funds for NIAAC accreditation for the kindergarten programs. We've been paying for some of the NIAAC expenses that we have, and seeking the certification with this grant. Therefore, okay, so with the universal grant, what we have been told, what has been shared with us, is that we would basically see an increase of around $39,223, close to $40,000 in our grant allotment. And we reached this figure by using a very conservative approach, because right now, they haven't made a definitive decision, but we did hear directly from a DESI person, we're looking that for districts that go full, then to allot, tend to, if we've got money, it could go anywhere from $10,000 to $11,000, possibly $12,000. So, the range they gave us was $115,000 to $120,000. Could be, then, the value of the grant that we would be awarded. So, I went with the conservative figure, that at minimum, it would be $115,000 adding to additional full-day classrooms. Chapter 70, we looked at Chapter 70, right now, because we charge tuition, we are only credited with .5 of what the per pupa allocation would be for part-time kindergarten children and any full-day children that pay tuition. If they pay tuition, DESI does not allow you to take them as a full per pupa.
Regardless of how little tuition is paid.
Yeah, yeah, regardless. Even if they're at the very lowest, paying, you know, $200 a year for tuition, we then cannot count them. And with that, you know, configuration, so I looked at the figure you're looking at now, the $922,067 is taking our current 200, and I believe this is based on 212, of our current population at those levels. So, if we had 65 part-time kids and then 25 full-day with no tuition, and then another, you know, 100 that were tuition. Crunching those numbers, our actual Chapter 70 for the kindergarten students only would be $922,067. Now, you take that same population of students, of the, it's 219 kids, and if we were to get the full allocation, which would have been $6,755 and 12 sets for a full per pupa for kindergarten, based on our actual, and these are actual numbers from our FY 12, Chapter 70, you know, allocation printout for kindergarten. The potential Chapter 70 aid would be worth $1,479,371. So, we started looking at, okay, what could the possible total revenue be? And you see the figures in front of you, $1,072, with the current model, we could potentially see the increase of $1,500,000 with going the full day. Now, minusing the costs of what it costs to run these programs right now, in terms, from up above, that's where we get the net revenue. So, the net revenue for those programs are there. Our increase would be equal to around $448,000, because you're looking, you know, we can't, we've got, can't double count that 368. So, the total net, so, I mean, it looks like we really could fare actually much better with Chapter 70 aid if we were to go universal full-day K.
Let's pause there.
I'm sorry?
Let's pause at that point.
Okay.
And open it up for questions about, and go back to that analysis. Anybody wanna start?
I have a question, not so much on the numbers, but the classrooms. Do you have to add more classrooms?
Yes. We currently have eight full-day classrooms with three half-day classrooms. When we initially made the proposal, we proposed to the Department of Education that we would add, we would convert those three half-day classrooms to full-day. Since then, we've had our kindergarten registration and initial screenings, and we're looking at real numbers and saying we'd actually have four more full-day classrooms, which would bring it to 12. So, we'd have 12 full-day classrooms, all staying around the 20 to 22 per student, per class, around that class size.
So, we do have the capacity?
We definitely have the capacity.
That's it for now.
That's it. Rhonda?
This is better than when we spoke before. When we spoke before, we were talking about break-even, or close to break-even. And now, crunching the numbers, we're looking at almost a half a million dollars in savings. My question has to do with the assumptions, that the, from the grant perspective and from Chapter 70, what is going to decrease that number? I mean, what are the factors that could go into not receiving $115,000 in grant money or the 1.5? I mean, that's, that's a, you know, more than a half a million dollar jump in Chapter 70 funding.
Yeah, and because, I mean, you're looking at full, the full per pupa being $6,700, and then, you know, and then looking at half. We have a sizable population in kindergarten, 219, you know, students, that's just this year. Again, remember, these numbers are based on this year. If our numbers, if the enrollment were to even increase, we know we're not gonna probably have less, because when we analyze right now, the numbers we have at preregistration, we track that number for years to sort, to be able to project, okay, if, you know, it looks like we're always getting at least 10 more come July. You know, in August, you know, then you get parents that come forward that have it. We're looking at, we feel pretty confident that we're gonna have a larger kindergarten population next year between the two schools than we have this year.
Just to kind of try and say it simply. When a child only comes half a day, or if a child pays tuition, we only get half the money that we could have gotten from Chapter 70. So, if it was $7,000 for Chapter 70 money for a child, we come up with $3,500. Instead, now we're gonna get the full, so that's an extra approximately $3,500 per child times 200 is what gives you this dollar amount. I mean, I'm estimating, I'm not giving you precise dollars as Anna did. But that's, and that is real. I mean, we go through that every year, and before, it wasn't as big of an issue, because we had more parents that could afford to pay the full tuition. But what's happened the last two years is that the amount of parents who now qualify for free tuition or minimal tuition has increased versus the number that you pay full tuition.
Yeah, and I'm glad you made that point, because it was the thing, when I was at the last meeting, that shocked me the most, and I wanted to make sure that the committee did hear that, that we are only getting reimbursed for .5 if someone pays tuition, or if, or if someone is, right, just attending the part-time or the half-day program.
I'd like to give you some additional information. For example, this year, we currently have...
Can you just pick up a little, Anna? The rain is dragging you out.
This year, I wanna give you information on the current population and how many kids we have paying tuition or not paying tuition.
Do you want me to read? Here, I'll try. Let me, if they can't hear you.
That has nothing to do with it.
We can't hear you, Anna.
The microphone doesn't help.
So, let me, I'm moving the microphone away from...
I'll have to use my loud cafeteria voice, is that what you want? Okay, here we go. Sharing this information with this current population, right now, we have 72 of our 221 students, families are paying tuition. Part-time, right now, we've got 21 at Deacon's part-time, 31 at Hammond that are part-time, and we have 147 no pays. 147 out of the 221 currently, because the Department of Education has been lowering the threshold, more families are eligible at that free...
They're raising the level of the eligible income level.
Yeah, but I say it the opposite way. I look at it, you know, from a math perspective.
The last comment that I'll make on this, 'cause I do have other comments, but I'll save it until after the recommendation, is that one cost that's not up here is our administrators chasing money. Meaning that Mrs. Ames is on the phone, and I've gotten the call, because I forget. No, no, I'm, I'll admit that, but that the administrative cost that it takes to collect the money is also a real cost to the... collect the money is also a real cost to the schools. And so I just wanted also put that, that's not reflected here. But I'll, I have other comments, but I'll save it until the end.
Jessica?
So by having essentially no tuition costs for parents, if this were to happen next year, would that allow more students to take advantage of the opportunity of going to this program?
All students would be eligible for full-day K. Every child would be enrolled in a full-day kindergarten program. The only difference would be is if a parent or guardian chose not to have their child stay the full day, they could come in and sign them out midday. They would be responsible for transportation, but they could definitely sign their child out midday. It's called an opt-out. They're still enrolled full-day, so they would still technically be a full-day student as far as chapter seventy is concerned, but we can't deny parent rights to dismiss their children at midday. And this was something that was very revealing when we talked to other school districts, particularly this, the one that, nearby district who most recently went through this transition process. And she said they had about ten percent of their parents opt-out and said, we'll pick up our child, or grandparents, we'll pick up our child midday. Within three weeks, which I questioned her on, and she said, within three weeks, the ten percent became one child. And the reason was the children become enthused in learning, they become involved in the activities, they get to know their classmates, and they don't want to leave their friends. Or they don't want to miss what's going to happen next. The other big reason the students wanted to stay is they didn't want to miss out on lunch.
Lunch is big.
And Mrs. Ames shared a story with us about offering a program where half-day children could come and stay for lunch, and that was their, their big thrill. The other piece is human nature. And I think as a mother of six, I can say this rather credibly, that all of a sudden you don't have children at home, and they're learning in school, and they're happy and they're safe, and the parents find that they have activities and other things that they want to do. But the real factor in this nearby district was the kids didn't want to leave. So we offer opt-out, so parents still have the option, but we, but all children are enrolled in full-day K.
Could I just cut both?
Please.
You have to-
Right now.
Right now, we have ninety-six students registered for the Hammond School, twenty of them for part-time and seventy-six for full-time. And last year at this ti, and the most we had this year was a hundred and ten students. Currently, we have a hundred and six. I think we just had some children move out. Last year at this time, we had seventy-eight students registered. So I really, and I, I believe Deacon's is up as well, so I really do feel, did have to talk to you about that, but I do feel confident that it's going to be a bigger kindergarten class next year, which is, which is very nice for our, our town, to see that growth. So I did want to say that. And I did send you the information on projections for, for tuition, could be paying tuition. And again, it was very few paying full and more at the other end.
Cliff?
I don't know whether to make these comments now or at the end.
Whatever you prefer.
Well, I've got some comments about the finances. The grant, that's a competitive grant or entitlement?
It's a, it's a combination. It is a grant that we are entitled to apply for based on our record of having full-day kindergarten programs. So it is not, it, it's competitive in that there are many districts who are eligible for it, but based on the reports that we have done and our record in kindergarten and our students' records in kindergarten, we are entitled to the per-class allotment. And I questioned our contact at the Department of Ed and asked her to put in writing, and so we were able to get the range of what we would be allotted next year per class. And I don't know if it's because we were pushing her hard for a solid figure or if it was the, combined with the performance of our, our kindergarten programs and receiving NIAC accreditation, but within a week, we got a letter from her giving us an additional amount of money, nearly eight thousand dollars for supplies for next year.
Sounds like everything else the state does, arbitrary and capricious.
Dr. Silva, I would like to offer that we've had, we've had the program, we've received this grant for eight, eight, how many years? About almost eight years, I believe.
Well, more than that, because I've been here eight, and it was two years before that, so at least ten years.
That's fine. It is at least, it's been a constant that we have been able to count on.
I just wanted to know if it was something that would dry up tomorrow. That's fine.
No. It is federal money also. It is not just state.
Now, the differential between, of the chapter seventy is because it's going, it's going from half-time to full-time. So there really is no increase in chapter seventy. The only, the increase is because we'll go, is due to the fact that we're going full-time. Is that correct?
The increase is because we have an increased enrollment number, so the per capita-
For full-time?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess this is my question. You know that I'm a proponent of early, early childhood education. With the opt-out, that was my, that's the concern, and they had that same, they've had that same system other places.
Yes.
But looking at the, these numbers, and I'm not the numbers guy, maybe I'm all wrong on this, but it would seem to me that despite the grant, we were in a position to do this before, and we could have saved money. Why didn't we?
Because-
You're looking at, what, the net revenue. That net revenue has been used from K to twelve. Remember, this, you know, basically in terms of what is costing us to run our program, yes, through the chapter seventy, we have that little, you know, that, that cushion of net revenue.
That's not, that's not my point.
Oh, because we've been spending at K to twelve.
I understand your, your question is why didn't we look at full-day transitions before?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's, it's educationally sound.
Absolutely.
Okay? It, it provides readiness for our kids to enter first grade.
Absolutely.
Okay? Which, which is a strong factor in WAM. And I'm saying, looking at this, and just to take the grant out of it, why didn't, why didn't we have this discussion before?
We have had the discussion in the superintendent's office. There's been a couple of concerns. One is that until recently, our tuition was higher, we were, our tuition income was higher. And quite honestly, we were concerned about parent reaction, parent choice. And when this, this is the first time that this transition grant was offered and saying, if you study this, we'll give you X amount of dollars for every new classroom that transitions. This is the first time that offer has been made. In previous years, they'd say, go full-day K, but we're not going to give you any more money.
Well, they're not actually giving you any more money now. They've given you increase in chapter seventy, but that's because we've gone to a full-day program.
But there will also be an increase in our grant allocation.
I understand that. I understand that.
There will be.
But it's, it's not, it's not that much as far as I'm concerned. And the other thing is, I mean, if you look at the tuitions, I mean, it's never been self-sustaining. We've never collected enough tuitions. Even at the highest point of tuition, tuition, we never collected. So I guess, I guess my point is, being a believer in early childhood, that, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just a little surprised that, looking at these numbers now, and I'm, I'm happy we're doing it, don't get me wrong, but I think that we might have had this conversation given the financial situation that we've been in before. That's it.
Well, I, I can respond to that.
And I may be wrong on my, on my analysis.
One, one further response, Dr. Sylvia, is availability, if you, if we go back three to four years ago, it's the, it's the sad reality is because we've reduced staff, we've had room availability, because I clearly remember being a principal at Deacon's and talking to Joan and saying, but then going, but I don't have rooms. If we did go full-day at that point, we didn't have enough classroom space.
Well, you still need classrooms for the half-day.
Yeah.
You still need classrooms for the half-day. That's it. Thank you.
Ken? I mean, yes, Ken?
On some of the, well, we didn't see all the parent, whatever, feedback. On the, on the opt-out, were there any negative feedback on the half-day because now tuition-free, you wouldn't be providing transportation? Was that a major concern for any amount of parents?
There, there weren't any comments about the transportation being taken away from midday. The, the comment, the, the most negative comment was, my child's young, and I think we even included it.
The bus routes.
The, the, the bus routes determine morning and afternoon session, they didn't like that. Not everyone could bend work hours to accommodate nor afford to pay for full-day K or childcare. Those were, but as far as the opt-out con, having them pick up their child, I don't remember seeing that in any comment. Did any of yous? No? And we went through all of them. I mean, there, there were a couple of parents who said, as you can see there in that middle comment, my child, he takes a nap every day, so she would, she'll pick him up. But that was the closest one.
What, what is the current enrollment now? Did I pass that? Did you mention that?
Two-hundred-nineteen.
Two-nineteen.
Two-nineteen, current kindergarten.
Some full-day and half-day, correct?
Yes.
So you're anticipating a thirty percent increase maybe or more with the full-day?
These numbers are based on current enrollment, not on an increase.
Okay.
What we're hearing is an increase.
There is an increase. It's an increase in enrollment as of this time last year.
I'm all set.
Thank you. Did I hear you say correct, did I hear correctly that you received a thirty thousand dollar grant to study this?
To, to pay for stipends for a study committee, to run the survey, and to supply additional full-day classrooms. If the committee were to vote-
When you say supply, you mean infrastructure? Desks?
I mean textbooks.
Supplies.
Materials and supplies that are needed for instructional materials and supplies, such as textbooks, pencils, crayons, paper, all of those instructional materials and supply. Everything short of furniture.
All right, okay. So they were obviously encouraging you to do this presumably for educational reasons.
Yes.
The three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-one-oh-five in the current program goes to support the entire district. It does not go into the revolver.
No, no, that's-
Right?
No, not at all.
And the additional four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars will go to support the entire district without any restrictions.
Exactly. Through our annual chapter seventy allocation.
I understand.
Yes, it would.
Please continue.
By the way, Mr. Smith, that's one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-one iPads.
Do you know, I was thinking that.
That's a lot of iPads right there.
Do you want to know how many textbooks we could download on those one-thousand iPads?
Does anybody remember me recognizing this speaker?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Continue.
Now, for full disclosure, okay.
Continue.
I do want to say that chapter, our chapter seventy-eight is always based on the previous year's enrollment. So I used actual FY-12, the, our current enrollment FY-12 numbers to project. For FY, you know, what they'll be looking at, they're going to be looking at our FY-12, October one. So we may have two-nineteen now because we've grown and we may, so all the children that come in after October one aren't counted in this, in the projection.
Continue, please.
This slide, we, we struggled with as a committee to present our conclusions succinctly. And the quote from, in red, just gives you a summary of how we came to it. And I tried to capture, and we wanted to capture to you, that it is data, it is survey results, but it's also discussing possibilities, hopes, and dreams for our kindergarten students. That intangible of providing students with the best foundation that we possibly can. It's based on the data of a majority of parent responses strongly agreeing with a full-day K program without tuition, a strong belief that it is a benefit we can give to our children and our families, and a even stronger belief that it is offering additional opportunities for learning, which is the essence in our children's growth and achievement, learning both academically and socially. The costs to the district in terms of the committee for a universal full-day kindergarten are insignificant, but are, the benefits are, are much more significant by omitting tuition and going to a full-day K program. The recommendations of the committee are to look to accept option one in that initial proposal you received at the early April meeting. And then we wanted to give you a piece of research in conclusion, that based on the most current research, the greater the learning needs of students, the more critical are increased learning opportunities, and it could be added at the earliest possible ages. A full-day kindergarten program increases students' learning opportunities in all areas, including academic, social, and emotional skills. And I want to thank our committee immensely, as I just touched this too much, and to say thank you so much for the time they put in after-school hours on their own time to not only work on the committee, but to collate surveys and to bring everything together in talking with colleagues and parents. And is there anything from the committee that you would like to add or that hasn't been said or should be reiterated?
It's about time.
Thank you. Questions, reverse order. Yes, all set? Cliff?
No, I mean, I, I think I mentioned it all the last, last time I spoke earlier, that I'm all for it, and I think it's the best option. And I, I appreciate all the work that everyone did, but I came to this conclusion a long time ago, that we needed to do more for our preschool kids. And so, let's do it.
Mike? No, it's not yet.
Well, I want, I want to kind of echo what, what Rhonda had said earlier and say that this has been the, the best school committee meeting that I've been to, since I've, since I've been on the committee. It was, it was good. You know, we had, we had recognition the first thing, you know, we had, you know, the awesome iPads, the Eastbury playground, and now we're having full, universal kindergarten. And I'm, I'm a little curious why more people aren't more enthused about that. But I, I think this is great. I didn't expect it to come back this fast. It was, it was two months ago, right, my first meeting? And I think we should rename it to the Kindergarten Action Committee. So-
I don't recommend that.
But, but, but Mr. Sylvia did bring up a point, and I, I was trying to wrestle with that too. I guess, when you see on that slide, that's got the, you know, the, the costs and whatnot, it mentions net revenue, and, and that's really like net profit. I mean, it's-
Surplus is what it's officially called.
We're making money. We have been making money. Shh. Okay, shh, okay, sorry. Take it back. We're not, we're not.
Not-for-profit organizations have surpluses. They don't make money.
Well, you know what I mean. So, so we, we were, we were currently making money, and we're going to make a lot more money. And where does that go, into the general fund?
Yes, that is, chapter seventy-eight is the aid that comes from the state, and then in combination with the town's contribution, that is our general fund operating budget.
I, I mean, I am surprised, as, I mean, I wasn't here when this was discussed before or whatever, but I am surprised we weren't doing it before. But I'm, I'm glad to see we're doing it now, or going, or possibly going to do it. Going, going back to the other options, what is the benefit of option two over the current situation?
There, the, the ben, well, if I answer it from my heart, I'd say there is no benefit because you're still charging tuition and you're only getting point five for capital funding for those students who pay tuition. But we needed to have three options, and one of the options the state gave us was to offer full-day K with tuition. In some communities, that may be- In some communities, that may be a real option, if income levels are such that the majority of their parents can afford a three thousand or thirty-five hundred dollar tuition. We don't have that scenario.
Okay.
So, that's where that option comes in.
And I think option two, we, we, we cut out the bus routes as well, right?
I'm sorry?
I think we cut out the bus routes in option two as well, right?
In option two, yes, we did.
Okay. And I think, I think it was already answered earlier, just sort of, I haven't had it confirmed with regard to grant money, and everyone always says, "Well, you know, you got a grant for that, and it ran out, and now tough luck on you." That's what we hear all the time from, you know, some of the, some people in the public. But it sounds like this is really sustainable. I mean, this is something we can expect.
Yes. I believe it is, and in both Anna's research and my pursuit of our kindergarten liaison and her supervisor, you know, they cited lots of political reasons why early childhood education is not going to be reduced, lots of political reasons why we could count on kindergarten money. But I think the most concrete reason is that this grant is funded through the next two years, so they know they have the money. And beyond that, historically, early childhood education, kindergarten funds in particular, have been probably the most stable.
Hmm, okay. I think that's it.
Rhonda?
So, I think that I, one of the things that I think has not been said enough is the fact of how this decreases the financial burden on our parents. It's, it's expensive to go, to send your child to a full-day kindergarten, to, and that, this is, this goes a long way to decreasing that financial burden. You know, I think what sold me was at the meeting where I didn't know that we were only getting reimbursed point five, and to go up that full percentage point just on top of the educational benefits is really what, what sold me on this. Again, I did not realize the, the amount that was going to come before us, which absolutely makes it a no-brainer, and I can echo my colleague's statement, "Why, what? Why haven't we done this before?" But I just asked that, you know, that is something that, you know, can be addressed separately from this, but this is all about, we're doing it now, and that going into the general fund really doesn't even start to help us with the amount of cuts that we're going to have to make right now. And so, that is going to, you know, if it, if all the numbers work out correctly, that is going to help us with the huge deficit that, that we're facing right now. So, again, I applaud the committee for all of their work. I wasn't able to attend all the meetings, but I was able to read over the information that was provided to me. I was thankful that I was at least able to attend one meeting, and just all of the work that went into this, and all the time. I really do thank you all for bringing this to the committee at this time.
The full-day kindergarten revolving fund currently has a balance as of approximately May first, I assume, a hundred and fifteen thousand. I assume that's going to probably drop a little between now and June thirtieth, but it will still be not an insignificant number. If the committee approves this, the kindergarten revolver will no longer be necessary. Is that a correct statement?
No.
Well, no, we would still need it.
No, because we also have preschool tuition that goes into that.
So, it's slightly mischaracterized.
That's right. It's kindergarten.
And preschool, okay.
Yeah.
The requirement that it's, it's an encumbered amount, okay, for preschool and kindergarten. It can only be spent on preschool and kindergarten, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are you, are you saying that the entire amount as of June thirtieth would then have to be spent on preschool? Because some aspect of that would in fact be related to kindergarten activities, and do we need some accounting to correctly move some monies out and leave some monies in? I know this is an nitty-gritty question, so if you don't have an answer right off the top of your head, I'm just raising it as a question you can answer at a later time.
The issue is when we go through our budget and we fund, for instance, a kindergarten teaching position, we may spend fifty percent of it from LEA, and fifty percent comes either from the revolving account or the grant. And now, in a year like this, where we're having such a financial issue, we will be able to perhaps fund more of that salary through the revolver and the grant with the additional money there, and therefore, some of that money that was budgeted towards a kindergarten salary might be able to go towards another salary that we may have to cut.
It's a one-time benefit, but it is a benefit.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Unless there are any questions?
I have one quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Maybe anyone feel free in this, because I'm not really a numbers person. But I, I think we have to, if, I think that we have to go into this with our eyes wide open, and, and again, correct me if I'm wrong on my thinking, you know, just because we get an increase in Chapter Seventy, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have an increase in net school spending. Because I've seen it since I've been on the committee, that increases in Chapter Seventy have been eaten up by a reduction in the town's contribution to education.
Dr. Sylvia is correct that-
So, we have to go into this thing with our eyes open.
Right. However, when the town gets additional Chapter Seventy money, if you can recall the last three budget conversations we've had with the town, they have keyed on the fact that Chapter Seventy was level-funded. In fact, if the current budget continues down the road, we may have some additional Chapter Seventy.
And I'm not saying this is a justification for voting against this, not by any stretch of imagination, but I think we have to go into it with our eyes wide open. Just because we're going to get our extra Chapter Seventy funding doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to end up in the school department's coffers.
Right.
It's a, it's a fair comment, but I, I need to offset it with the foul-
I hope so.
You need, you hope it's fair, or you hope there's an offset?
No, offset it. I don't want you to.
There is, with respect to the Chapter Seventy formula, there is nothing more fundamental than the number of students.
Exactly.
So, when you increase the number of students, you not only increase the Chapter Seventy outcome, but you also increase the town's contribution number as well. So, there's nothing more fundamental than that number. So, while on a theoretical, political level-
You know what I'm saying.
Yes, I know what you're saying, but I'm, I'm confident, especially because it's not a close call, both financially and educationally, that, that, not to give away my vote here, but this does seem like the right thing to be pursuing. Okay, anything else?
I'll move to approve option A as presented this evening.
That would be option one.
Option one.
Second.
Do we need anything more than that, Michelle? Is option one good enough? Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I know you've been here a long time. We appreciate your efforts, and good luck with this great program.
Thank you all for coming and staying.
Congratulations to the parents of kindergarteners that are going in next year. It's one year too late.
One year too late, Rhonda.
Yeah, I'm going to hold Jackson back, okay, just so you know? He's going to be going through kindergarten again.
I understand, one year too late for you.
Yeah, exactly. No, Jackson's a pretty good girl. Funny.
Anna, you're up.
If you don't mind, I'm going to change seats, because this one actually is a more comfortable seat than this one. I'm going to be working off your summary, your function summary report that you received in your packet. What you see in the PowerPoint tonight, you're going to see an abbreviated version. I think I've got it down to five slides, okay? Let's go to the first one.
Because we do have this information in our packet.
Yes. So, just going, what I, what I've done to sort of abbreviate the, the whole PowerPoint presentation is to, you know, do the numbers by those series, by the thousand series. A thousand series is all, you know, school committee and the superintendent, all the two thousands. I tried to break up, for example, district leadership has its sort of own two thousand accounts, and then you have the teachers and other teachers, which is the, the really main item. And I like what I see in terms of those salaries in that very, if you can see, I mean, we're so close to where we were, you know, last year, when you look at the largest part of our budget, which is teacher salaries. And also other teachers as well are in there. Professional development, we've, you see, the difference there again is because we've had a great deal of professional, much-needed professional development has occurred this year. And the, where that is, is falling down is in the professional development substitute account, as you can see, twenty-five thousand in the hole, okay, for this current year. So, that's really, that, that accounts for that difference in there. In the rest of the instructional accounts, the two thousand accounts, looking at the instructional materials, yes, you know, it's less because we have been purchasing more. You've known that throughout the year. Guidance and pupil services, no concern. Operations and maintenance, I did want to give you a little bit more information on where we are with our maintenance accounts. The custodial account, the, within that operations, our custodial account, the salaries and substitutes is running, the substitutes is running around twenty-three thousand in deficit, so that's contributing to the difference in having twenty-five percent in the prior year, and now we're down to twenty-three in the current year in the operations. It's mainly, it's custodial substitute salaries. We've called a moratorium on that. Right now, with our larger schools, if they only have one custodian absent, the middle school and high school are not calling in a sub for that one position. Once if they have two individuals that are absent on any evening, then they are, then they would call a sub for the second individual that's out, to just to try to, you know, rein in those expenses in that account. In our heating, we are currently, in comparison to how much we had paid out for the entire heating season, comparison to last year, we are fifty-eight thousand in, ahead of the gate. Okay, we've spent fifty-eight thousand less. When the committee had asked for me to do a little bit more digging in terms of, you know, what's happening with our utility and our heating accounts, when I started, I did, did some deeper analysis, even with our heating accounts, and I questioned that for the last four billings that we received from our supplier, which is Suez, I saw band charges were showing up. So, I contacted our, the company, and I got very good news, matter of fact, today, in an email today, that in fact, they did make errors in computing what our charges should be, and they're going to be giving us a credit of ten thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars. So, that'll bring the savings up to around sixty-eight thousand ahead of where we were last year, once we get this, we get this credit. In an analysis of the electrical accounts, and I, I started this last year for Mr. Fonce when he had, had inquired, and so, I took it, I did some more, went through some other, some other schools and just add, looked at more months. And the pattern, and what I'm seeing is that, in actually our larger schools, high school and middle school, their usage actually went down in comparison to last year, but yet the charges have increased. It has to do with distribution demand charges. If you compare from last year to this year, you've seen significant increase. And I think really what we're hearing from all the energy consultants and gurus is that the cost of fuel is driving a lot of the then increases that the utility companies, of course, are, are, you know, handing down to us.
High-priced utilities.
So, now, the elementary schools, I think we need to do a better job of usage, because I did see that our consumption increased in, again, this is electric, not heat, electric.
Yeah.
Our electricity usage actually has gone up, so we're hoping to be able to work with the head custodians and the principals of those schools to try to resurrect some of the, you know, energy, you know, cost-saving measures that had been in place, to try to identify where is it falling apart and why, why is that usage up there, you know, to try to be able to bring that back down. So, the good news in our larger schools, they're actually down, they're being, you know, but again, we're, we're paying more because of, a lot of it has to do with fuel, fuel and the charges that they're passing on to us.
Were there, can I, oh, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Were there any decreases due to the mild winter on the, on the fuel, or you're just talking electricity?
I believe that the N, these, it's the delivery portion of the bill, which is NSTAR, that's where I've seen the increase in charges, because we actually locked into a very good, an excellent supplier rate. The market is just starting to come down. The predictions is that we're going to have, it'll be really actually very good next year, that supposedly the electric and gas prices are supposed to come down. That's what they're all predicting right now, based on number of factors, number of factors. So, I'm, I'm waiting to see what's going to happen with this merger, folks don't know, NSTAR. We received notice of emerging with another company. Matter of fact, that, we just came across our desk like today.
The merger is done, it's-
Done.
We're Northeast Utilities and-
Now, okay.
Part of the increase in the customer base will result in hopefully a reduction in costs.
Yeah, in a document that I received today, that was included in that document that hoped it's supposed to, but we'll see how that works out. Any questions around operations and maintenance?
Yes, Mike.
To Kenny, Kenny's point, I thought, you just mentioned the savings we had, about fifty-eight to sixty-eight thousand dollars. I thought that was regarding the heat, no?
It was.
That, that was regarding the heat.
That was heat, yeah. The savings was in our heating accounts.
And what was your question, Ken, regarding the?
She might have gone over that while I was out, so that's why I missed that.
Oh, okay. All right. No, thank you, that, I was, I was really happy to hear that. Are we discussing this as well?
Yes.
All right. Is this available on the website? Or can it be?
It can be.
And I say that because I, before and during town meeting, I heard people keep mentioning references, so, you know, why doesn't the school department have a, a line-by-line item like the town does? And, and we do, it's just nobody knows about it. So, if we could put that out there, it'd be great.
I believe we have been putting some fina, it may, it may be there. I know we've been sending, Michelle, maybe you could clarify, no?
I have been sending. I know we did one.
But we, we can definitely do that. I'll make sure it gets done then.
I know you're going to talk about the revolvers, but is this it for the main budget?
Yes, I really don't have any concerns on my part right now, open to questions-
Any other questions?
From anyone?
Yeah, I, I just, it's not a question, it's a comment. It's about public perceptions and public, public misinformation. Could you clarify for me and for the public, because I think there is some public misinformation out there? out there? Because there is a perception out there on account number 1110, that that is the slush fund and the travel account for the school committee, that we go traveling all over the world and across the country, and we go to Vegas and wherever else. Could you just go over real briefly? I know you don't have it in front of you, okay? What the primary purpose of that account is?
The primary, the school committee has two accounts. You have one that is contracted services, and that's to pay the legal bills. We allocated 23,000 this year. We have expended 18,000, and that's strictly to pay the legal bills. The other school committee account is used for, for example, it paid for the refreshments, it paid for the certificates that we just honored our employees with, many other costs. Advertising, when we advertise for positions, that comes out of the school committee line item. Very little, and I want to, and I can say this with total confidence, very little of this money actually goes to any of you.
Thank you.
It is really, it's spent on many, many, you know, charges that we have. At the end of the year, retirement, you know, the retirement plaques are in there.
I know that one of the biggest, one of the biggest things coming out of this account are our professional organizations. We are, we are a member of the, an affiliate member of the National School Board Association, plus also the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And that's how we get our professional development. That's how we get our information, and that's how we stay current. So these memberships are all coming out of that account also. So, you know, I just wanted to clear that up because there's an awful lot of misinformation out there.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that it wasn't our private Vegas account.
Thank you, Cliff. Revolving accounts?
The only account, well, here, is in our non-net transportation. Really no surprise to me, looking at where we are. I believe the last time I came before you, someone had asked, well, what do you think that the projected deficit's going to be by the end of the year? You know, we had $180,000 deficit last year. This year's budget was reduced by $12,000. So, you know, that puts us further into deficit.
Actually, I think it was 20.
I'm sorry?
I think it was 20.
No, it actually is...
Doesn't matter.
12, I was surprised, yeah. But so that, I'm anticipating we could most likely go to around 200,000 to 220,000, which in a way makes total sense to me because for how long have we said in our planning, it costs $1,005,000 to run this operation? If you take what we, we have been allocated, the $1,003,000, and you look at the deficit, there's the deficit, it would come up to that $1,005,000. You know, it's been, you know, underfunded.
But Anna, wouldn't you say, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Wouldn't you also say that the increase in repairs to the aging fleet would also have something to do with...
Well, I think that's what's going to bump up our, last year it being 180,000 is going to be looking more like 200,000 to 220,000. And about half of that increase is in supplies. The other is we have had an increase in special ed salaries. You know, analyzed it with Mr. Tatro, you know, just looking. But, you know, we're doing a lot more, you know? And the costs.
So you're predicting a 200,000 approximately deficit?
Two to 220, I think.
And you're going to cover that with what?
We, of course, will be accessing the revolving account. And that is our only other source. So we really could be facing a situation at the end of the year where I'm going to have to start paying bills. We have to make our salary commitments. We may have to hold some bills, you know, because we may not, you know, you can't, if you've got zero balance in that revolving account.
So...
And we don't anticipate that the revolving account, we looked at, we're trying to project revenue. We've been really chasing down the money unbelievably. Lynn in our office, Vanessa, you know, just really chasing down, you know, people that owe us money. And we're, we know it's not going to cover it. We're not confident that it's going to cover the full amount of the deficit this year.
So as of June 30th, the transportation department, including the revolver, will be in the hole?
Yes, absolutely.
And the amount you predict as of this moment is approximately how much?
Total by 220,000 we're going to run short.
No, how much will the hold, how much will the hold be? It's only seven weeks away.
I'm looking maybe 70, 80,000?
I just heard a different number from the superintendent.
You think...
Well, given what you said, what we'll have in the revolving account, I said between 20,000 and 40,000. The...
The repairs, I'm concerned the repairs and how much money we're spending. It's a lot.
And the solution will simply be to not pay bills?
Yes.
The solution will be to go to fall town meeting with the bill as other departments have to do.
Legally, any expenses incurred in a fiscal year that you cannot meet then through has to then go before the town.
I understand.
In that fall meeting, so.
And as I recall, it requires a seven eighths or a very high percentage approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a very, very high percentage for prior year bills. Anyway, go ahead, revolvers.
All right. And then what's left is basically the, in the revolving accounts, currently, when I ran this report, was 113, we've already seen an increase in our revolving account. We've been chasing down the money since this printout, you know, these reports. And we're up to 143,000 as of today. So we have chased down some money, so that actually, you're going to see that figure increase. Athletics, a little less right now. We have ordered more supplies than we've had in previous years. I was trying to look at what lines that we're seeing these expenditures in for the athletics account. Adult ed is basically maintained that same level for several months now. In our full-day kindergarten, I've calculated that we may maybe expend around 60,000 to get us to the end of the year just for the par salaries, which means we are going to have a surplus in that account that could be used to offset, as Dr. Ravinevich said, we could offset half of a teacher's salary or something for next year that would help us. Desi has always said that if you charge tuition, those monies should be put in a revolving account, and they should be used for early childhood education. So we wouldn't be at liberty to take that money to spend it on grades one through 12. We, by right, should only expend those monies on the kindergarten program. School choice, we just received our March reimbursement, our reimbursement's been running around 68,000 every chunk. That's where we are with that. And then West Academy, you know, again, we're, you know, we're paying salaries, and we just took in some tuition, so that figures up, yeah, a little bit.
Any question on the revolving accounts?
West, are we still breaking even? Good.
Okay.
Thank you, Anna. Gifts, Dr. Ravinevich.
I recommend acceptance of the following gifts. The Association Press Book donation valued at $931.10 to the Wareham High School Library and Young Adult Program.
Yes, please. Any discussion? I'll take a motion.
I move to accept.
I think I heard a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
$1,820 from the Village PTA to the East Wareham School Playground Fund in lieu of a field trip for the students.
Any discussion?
Do we know which field trip?
No.
Okay.
It's in lieu of.
So moved.
You're going to question the... I heard, I heard a motion.
You were running Peter to pay Paul.
You had too much fun on your field trip, I think. Yeah. I heard a motion. A second?
A second. I must be tired because I thought he said village people.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you, PTA.
$50 from the Roger Long of Wareham to the East Wareham School Playground Fund. From Roger Long, $50.
Every little bit helps. Thank you, Mr. Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
10 compression nautilus machines from Jason Coleman of Wareham valued at $4,500 to the Wareham High School Athletic Department.
Wow. Very nice.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
We've got the room to put them?
Yeah, I assume Mr. LaRanger has been actively involved in this?
Yes.
Okay. All those, did I get a motion?
Yep.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
$2,410 from Lynda Colile, jazz singer from Onset, to the Wareham High School Best Buddies Club from her fundraising activity and evening in Paris held at Salerno's.
Very nice. Thank you. Any discussion? Excuse me, Mike?
I move to accept the gift.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Mr. Flaherty, you're up.
I can withdraw that if you want, in the interest of time.
It's up to you.
I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
That's fine.
For next, for next meeting.
Have you talked to our parliamentarian?
Who's that?
No, that's okay. That's fine. Under any other business, I just want to let the public know that we have, first of all, we're grateful for the support that we received at town meeting regarding the school district's debt exclusions and override, and we have officially requested to go before the Board of Selectmen to ask for their support in putting it on the ballot. And we will obviously keep you informed, as I'm sure the local media will as well. We will be going into executive session for a report on legal cases and to approve executive session minutes. The only thing we'll be doing when we come out of this executive session will be to adjourn. So I thank you for being here. Executive session, vote please.
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes, we are in executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Jessica, we have you here at the next meeting, I believe, right?